I mean, 40,000 in personal property taxes. Those numbers have started to come down. We're now paying about 50,000, less than that, due to the fact of the shortage of buildings being filled up. So, diversity, I look at that and I heard some comments today. I was embarrassed, and I wasn't expecting that. I've learned many things from inside my building, and the Asian culture is very good at business. We should all learn from that. But my point is, what is council and the mayor, and what is the city of Troy doing to keep businesses like mine? My business is paid between probably 100 and 220,000 in property taxes for 15 years. But it worries me. I love Troy, but I don't know what keeps me here, or my business here. You know, why won't I move to Novi? Why won't I go to Plymouth? We have to stop the negative attitude of what we have in this city. If it doesn't stop, I'm nervous about where we're going to be. So, I think everybody here, how do you think positively? I can find anybody to think negatively. Anybody can do that. But to think positive in a tough business climate, everybody suffered, we're all suffering, but we need to move forward as a group. So, I appreciate that, and I wanted to say, I'm proud to work for my Asian company, and I think everybody should. Some of the comments tonight, I find it a little sad. But, hey, we need to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. James Savage? Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm kind of amazed how one word can produce so much hatred. But anyhow, I'm not going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about the Transit Center. Okay, the Transit Center debate is not over. The debate, and whether to build it, may be over, but the debate over how it will be paid for is just starting. Four members of council voted to support the project on the verbal assurance that it would not cost the Troy taxpayers any more than, I believe it was 31,000 was stated, a year for maintenance. Everything else was supposed to be paid for by the federal government. And we all know that that dream is just a dream. It is now time for all council to work together to turn those verbal assurances into a foolproof commitment. Troy taxpayers need protection against this risky venture. I have a document that states, in financial year 2009, 2010, and that's the year that they said they were going to close the library, one consulting company was paid $38,000 for work on the Transit Center, one item. I have asked for over two years, who paid that bill? And who paid all the other consulting expenses, and the lobbyist expenses, and our city staff and legal department expenses associated with the Transit Center? This was a project that wasn't going to cost our taxpayers anything. We hear the word transparency used to criticize our mayor. But we can't get transparency from our own management. And if we can't get an accurate cost for the Transit Center for past expenditures, how can we believe the projected costs for the future? We have heard a lot about a $500 million federal government gave to Celindra, I think that's the name, and it went broke. We, the taxpayer, took a half-billion-dollar hit. There's a multimillion-dollar bridge to Canada that carries, I think at one time, 400 trucks a day from the Toronto garbage into our state. We need less bridges and less, more, less bridges and less trucks. Then there's the people mover, can be subsidized for the rest of its time. Yesterday's Free Press, Elkheart, Indiana, $55 million in federal funds blown on a failed electric car plant. Are we so naive that we believe it couldn't happen here in Troy? This madness has to stop. We cannot stop the federal government from squandering our money, but we can and we must stop our city government from squandering Troy taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Jen Hillsinger?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. When I planned to speak, I didn't know what I'd be hearing tonight from the other members of the comment section, so I'm a little shaky after what I've been hearing tonight. And I just wanted to, before I start with my prepared statement, say that, as the mayor, you have limited responsibility and role in the community. But what you do do is you set an atmosphere at the top. That's what leadership does. You set the tone, you set the atmosphere. And I'm sorry, but this is your group right now. This is the atmosphere that you helped to create. We all share in responsibility in what the community does, but the atmosphere is set right at the top. I'll go ahead and start with my prepared statement. It was an unlikely place for a pivotal point in Asian-American history. A young draftsman named Vincent Chin was attending his own bachelor party at a suburban bar. With the party in full swing, Chin and Ronald Evans, a white auto worker, began trading insults across the bar. "It's because of you," blank, "that we're out of work." Witnesses later remembered Evans yelling at Chin. Chin struck Evans, and an altercation ensued. Evans' stepson, Michael Nitz, who had been recently laid off from his job at an auto plant, jumped in. But it was soon broken up by a parking attendant. Chin and his friends left the bar and went their separate ways. 20 minutes later, Evans and Nitz caught up with Chin in the front of a fast-food restaurant. Evans grabbed a baseball bat and delivered a blow to Chin's leg. Nitz held the wounded Chin while Evans struck his head with a bat, bashing his skull in. Before he slipped into a coma, Chin murmured to a friend, "It's not fair." Four days later, and five days before his wedding, Chin died as a result of the injuries he sustained during the beating. The incident on June 19, 1982, seemed an almost perfect metaphor for an anti-Asian sentiment in America. It was ignorant. Evans and Nitz presumed Chin, a 27-year-old Chinese-American, was Japanese. It was economically motivated. The two auto workers blamed the Japanese, and mistakenly Chin, for the ailing U.S. auto industry and the consequential loss of jobs. But if the beating itself was emblematic of the racial problems in America, the subsequent trial challenged many Asian-Pacific Americans' faith in the American way. Evans and Nitz were charged and pleaded guilty to manslaughter. For this, they each received a sentence of three years probation and a $3,000 fine, a sentence that many APA community leaders perceived as a slap on the wrist. Later, federal civil rights cases brought against the two defendants were appealed, and the juries acquitted each of them. Neither served a jail sentence. While I do not know Gordon Shepke's or Marv Reinhardt's heart, what I do know is that these racist, anti-Chinese remarks are way out of line. Words matter. Attitudes matter. Even Gordon Shepke's and Marv Reinhardt's. Let's not forget Vincent Chin and how he died. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the people who have signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Mr. Shepke?
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. I never realized I was such a racist. I would like to not apologize for my comments. I'd like to show you where those comments came from. In '09, we took about a two-and-a-half, a two-and-a-half week through China. We were in, we were all through China, and it was one of the most wonderful experiences I've ever had. We had a great, deep love for the Chinese people. But the people that we don't have a love for are the people in the Chinese government, and that's what my comments were about. The Chinese, the Chikons, the government, leadership, and also other countries where the leadership had no use for this country. I have no use for leadership of any country that does not respect human rights and human life. And when things happen like Tiananmen Square, and one of our guides, when we were in Beijing, we asked him, "What happened to the young man that kept on standing in front of the tank?" And they said, "Oh, they had to run him over." And this kind of disrespect for human life, and the butchery of the people, and taking away of rights that we take for granted in this country, I guess I have a problem with it. I love the Constitution. I love, I love our founding fathers, and I stand for everything, including my right to express myself. Did I use a wrong word? Chikon? I sped it, that should be leadership of the Chinese Communist government. They are lending money and getting this country so in debt to them that after a while, we're going to be, we're going to be bound so tight, we won't be able to move. We love the people. We, we joyed in them. You ought to see all the pictures we have of the babies and the people that we met. Nothing but great joy and respect for the Chinese people. There was no comments made at this podium that were meant in any way whatsoever to be derogatory or disparaging remarks. And as far as, as far as qualifications on this, on the planning commission serving this city, I have a lot more qualifications than what's, what's been set up here tonight. It's very disparaging to me to listen to that kind of comments. And about, when you understand how the traffic committee works, the traffic committee works when there are things on the agenda for it to work. It could either be stop signs, it can be sidewalk abatements or whatever. And some months we don't meet, and some months we do meet. I, I'm not going to challenge how many meetings I attended, but there was many, many times when I could attend that the meetings were canceled because they couldn't get a quorum, or there was no, because of the downturn in the economy, there wasn't anything going on at that particular time. My record, I figure overall, is, is good. It'll be better if there was, if there's more appropriate things where I can really get my teeth into. But when we had a mayor sitting up here before that attended just a couple of meetings in two years on the Downtown Development Authority, and because of her lack of leadership and our city manager, we've got such an immense default facing us, I think these are the kinds of concerns that we ought to be focusing on, not trying to tackle people and make up some kind of attacks on members. I've lived in Troy 42 years, and I've been coming here, visiting relatives all my life from Ferndale. And I think that a lot of these disparaging remarks were just made to take the focus off of the real thing, and that's to get good people on our committees in this city, and qualified people, and also to try to take away and intimidate people from speaking reasonably what their, what their thoughts are, and not trying to pick. They keep on trying to say, "We're trying to divide the city." We're not trying to divide the city, but there are certain groups in this city that are trying to divide this city and pit one resident against another. We have a common goal, and that's to make this city work.
30 seconds, Mr. Shepke.
Is that it?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity, and I couldn't sit there without defending my, I hate it when somebody tries to tear somebody else down over, over something that was not, was unintended. And I, and I am grateful for this opportunity to come up and try to clarify these things and express my love for the Chinese people. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. I'm sorry, if you could announce your name, please.
Pardon me. I'm Ron Butterball, longtime, 40-year resident of the city of Troy, first-time speaker at a council meeting. We've had some heavy topics here tonight, and first, I'd like to start with maybe a positive message. Thankfully, I don't know how many people have seen the Oakland Press from Sunday, there was a special insert, 12-page insert highlighting the city of Troy school system, and their programs, and their excellence, and their diversity, and their support programs for unification. So, the school system knows how to do it. There's no reason why we can't, as a city, try to duplicate this process also. I'm here tonight, frankly, to talk about a follow-up to a meeting that I attended. This was the January 9 meeting, the open meeting that Mayor Daniels held in the community center. I happened to attend that meeting, and was really pretty surprised at what I heard. And I'm not going to go through all of that, because that's a public meeting. I have, as a result of a FOIA request, I have the exact words of everything that was said in that meeting. And this can be reviewed. If those of you on the council have not done so, I urge you to listen to it and listen to every word. That way, there can't be any coloring. My biases can't be colored one way or another. The mayor's biases can't be colored one way or another. It speaks for itself. But the important message is, and I think you'll see that, and I'll just summarize it. Young adults and youth of our, of our community came to the mayor to follow up on her commitment to participate in a student-led anti-bullying campaign. The mayor agreed to that in the December timeframe, the period when all of this controversy got started. The meeting was started out very positive. Amy Grant, who was a very, very quality, good speaker, and a good explanation of what should be done, presented material. It was all positive. There was nothing negative about it. It was about what a great opportunity Mayor Daniels and the city had to show, to bring unity. The meeting broke down when Mayor Daniels attempted to change away from her commitment to meet or participate in this anti-bullying campaign. Instead, she turned it into something she said the city would sponsor. The city would sponsor an anti-suicide campaign, completely missing the point. From there, the meeting turned negative. It turned down. There was a lot of things said. But the bottom line was, the youth of our, of our community, the young adults of our community, said not one negative word. Every word they said was towards trying to bring the community together and to show positive things. And I'll let you read and listen to this, make your own conclusions as to whether or not it was a two-sided situation where both parties wanted to bring unity, or did only one party want to bring unity? I find that deeply concerning. I leave that with you tonight. I'm very glad to see Dr. Wilkinson here tonight. I'm going to give him this copy of that meeting, and I would ask him to read it and see if he feels the city of Troy and the leadership of the mayor of the city of Troy is trying to bring us together or following her own private agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Sitting back there, I felt that Mr. Shepke needs some defense, and we need to place what he said in a previous council meeting in his proper context. He did some of that, and I appreciate what's said. I want to say that Mr. Shepke is a man of impeccable character. He has high integrity. He's conscientious. He loves the city of Troy. He has multiple experiences in construction and strategic planning that qualify him for the Planning Commission. The comment he used was in the context of the discussion regarding the Transit Center. And he was simply pointing out that the eight-plus-million dollars was a loan from the Chinese government, which is communist. He was not disparaging any ethnic group that are residents or citizens of this country. I find that, I don't think that the people who've commented against him know him. I know him. There's not an evil or a mean bone in his body. The real reason I wanted to come tonight is more positive. Not that that's not positive. But my grandson found a wallet on the street as he got off the bus a few weeks ago. He brought it to me, and he said, "Call the police." And we did. Turned out, it was a wallet from someone from another city. I called the police. They came to the house, picked it up. I assumed they returned it to its rightful owner. But you know, the extra steps that they went to, to impress a nine-year-old child, are just wonderful. They wrote a civilian commendation from the Troy Police Department, and the last, I won't read it all, but it says, "Your actions are commendable and admirable. Signed, Chief Gary Meyer." Then Officer Stephen Brazel came to the house with the K-9 unit. He allowed Caleb to seat a dog. He wouldn't let him pet it, although Caleb loves dogs, but for safety reasons, he wouldn't let him get that close. But what he did let him do was climb into the, into the vehicle, let him turn on the lights. He hit the siren once, I hope that's acceptable, and showed him how the vehicle works. You know that one that channeled over to the police department? They went the extra mile to help convert one, one young citizen, and they can do that, citizen by citizen. I commend the Troy Police Department, in particular Officer Brazel and Chief Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Chair Sero?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. This afternoon, my wife and I had an opportunity to listen to a CD. It's the same CD that was mentioned here a few minutes ago. I don't know how many of you listened to that CD. What we got out of it is it was an ambush. These people were determined, in every way possible, to get the mayor to say something that she wasn't going to say. They were determined to get her to accommodate them in what they wanted her to do. Fortunately, we have a mayor that has some courage. She stood up to them. Now, if this is what we're going to do every week, it's ridiculous. Let's get down, let's stop this PC nonsense. Let's get down to the town council business, like it should be. I'm tired of hearing people come up here and berate this mayor. She hasn't been in office long enough, few people to know what she can do. Give her the opportunity. Let her work toward the goals that this city needs. Maybe not the goals that Michelle Hightech needs, but the city as a whole, not just the Chamber of Commerce. Give her the opportunity. Listen to it, folks. Listen to it. This was an ambush. It was not a discussion. And anytime the teenagers come in here and want their 15 minutes of glory, let them come in and give it to them, and then throw them the hell out.
Mr. Chair Sero, please.
I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Steve Johansson, Troy resident, 37 years, council mayor. How are you? Mayor, if this is your side that's causing this, I'm dumbfounded. I haven't heard anybody from your side say anything. I've heard a lot of negative things, and I want to say, you guys are leaving. The reaction to some dialogue that somebody says is, is overreaction. It's causing, it's stifling free speech instead of causing an open and free exchange of ideas. Frankly, my stomach's upset from sitting through it. I don't know how you get from expressing concern about the Chinese government loans to the United States government to the horrible crime that was committed to Mr. Chin. I, I don't see the connect there. I'm sorry. I also know Mr. Shepke. I've known him for at least 30 years, and I've found him to be an upstanding citizen. And I, I'm concerned about the, is Troy better off 10 years ago with the planning commission we have? I think it's time for a change. I think that the citizens of Troy hired some new people because they wanted a change. And I'd like you to take this into consideration when you're thinking about the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that concludes public comments. We will take a break. Would you like to take a break? We'll reconvene in five minutes. Back to order, please. Could we bring the meeting back to order, please? Take your seats. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to response and reply to public comments. Is there anyone on council that would like to say anything at this time?
I would.
Oh, Manager Zillig, thank you.
Sure. There were some misstatements about the Downtown Development Authority, and I'd like to start with this meeting, making corrections there too, because I think there's a misconception of what the Downtown Development Authority was and is, and its relationship to previous and current city managers and city councils. The Downtown Development Authority was established primarily as an economic development tool and was created to attract, at that time and at the current time, our largest taxpayer, Somerset Collection. We had to provide a parking structure as an enticement for the collection to be built on that site. We also received money through the DDA in capturing values for widening Big Beaver, which is enjoyed by many, many travelers. And it was used also for the adaptive reuse of the old Troy High into the community center that I think has had over, well over a million participants, most of them residents, since its inception. The funding mechanism for those projects, which began in 1993, is due debt service or bond issues. And the bond issues were essentially recommended by the DDA, but only the city council at that time can approve them. And that's what happened since 1993 with those bond issues. And so it's not like the DDA is some autonomous body that makes decisions and sucks the taxpayers' money down some bottomless pit. The converse is true. It's a partnership and actually controlled by the mayor and council. Those bond issues are certainly required to be paid, as they are an obligation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Henderson?
I just, I want to say on Mr. Shepke's behalf, and I appreciate the fact that he came up here to speak. I know Mr. Shepke. He is a genuinely nice, nice man. He doesn't have a racist bone in his body, and it's unfortunate that the use of the word that was used, and I know the context in which it was used, he was more disparaging the government of the United States for getting themselves into bad debt. And I'll just leave it at that, but it's unfortunate that that stick is being used to beat a guy that I know to be a pretty nice man.
Thank you. Councilman Slade?
I'd just like to echo that. I don't know Mr. Shepke that well. We've met from time to time, but I believe I do know his heart, and I don't think his heart was intending to hurt anyone, but it did. And, you know, I'm sorry that that happened. I mean, we have a very diverse community. We should embrace that. Troy is getting a bad rap, but it seems that, you know, we need to forgive. And if we say the wrong things, you know, let's apologize and move on. But I'm sorry that this has, you know, shed such a negative, so much negative feedback on Mr. Shepke, because I don't think he really intended that at all. And it just puts Troy in a bad light, and I'm just, I'm tired of seeing that happen. I don't know how to stop it, except to say that maybe all of us need to be a little more careful with our words. I need to be as well. And sometimes we say things we'd like to take back. So I'm sorry that that happened. I don't believe it was intended to, as a slur to anyone. I just don't believe that's Mr. Shepke's heart, and I just wanted to echo what Councilman Henderson said there. So let's forgive and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor. Mayor Proton?
I just wanted to point out something. I don't remember who came to the podium and said this, and so I don't want to use a name and have it not be correct, but in speaking about the Planning Commission, someone indicated that the Planning Commission had the ability to tax the community and was responsible for increasing the taxes during the course of the people that were serving on the Planning Commission. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified as well, because that is not correct.
Okay, thank you. That concludes response to public comments. We're going to move on to postponed items, and that is the mayoral nominations to the Planning Commission. At this point, I think I can say on behalf of all the council, the city management staff, that we would want to extend a sincere thank you to all persons who are willing to serve on and have served on the boards and commissions available within the city. And I can say with confidence that whether you gain the appointment or not, we sincerely value your contributions, past, present, and future, of anyone who's willing to help our great city. And I'll move the first resolution, let it be resolved that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby forwards the following nominating persons: Gordon Shepke, Edward Kempin, and Steve Loken, to serve on the Planning Commission Board for a term expiring 12/31/2014, to be approved at the next city council meeting scheduled for February 20, 2012. May I have a second?
I'll second to get it on the table for discussion.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Henderson. Discussion?
Mayor. Mayor Proton?
I'll be the first to speak, and I, in keeping with the mantra from someone else that spoke at public comment, and the importance of trying to stay positive, and so that's what I'm going to do with my comments. As I'm sure all of you spent considerable time going over all of the applications that we received, not only for the Planning Commission, but for the other boards and committees that are up for nomination and vote this evening. There were many. We appreciate the time that people took to fill out the applications and to express an interest in serving. But in terms of choosing whether or not I would be willing to support any of the names that were presented for nomination to this board and committee, what I really focused on was the positive. And I think that this is a committee, a commission, that's very important, and that it is responsible for shaping the way that our city looks and feels, not only to the people that live here, but also to the people and the businesses that would consider locating here, that may not have made that decision yet. And I think that it's absolutely imperative that we consider the qualifications and the experience of the people that we're considering for nomination to this board and committee. And not to say that one person is qualified and another is unqualified, but I think that engaging all of the applications that we receive today, looking at the experience of the applicants that we had today, we really need to focus on those that are able to contribute to something in the specific areas that the Planning Commission is going to be responsible for looking at. And when I did that in my own time, reviewing the applications, I was looking for people that possibly had experience on the Planning Commission, obviously, that's one, but also had work experience, had experience on boards and committees, had educational backgrounds that are going to allow them to have the broadest range of knowledge in order to make these very important decisions. And I think that in reviewing those applications, there were some that stood out above others in terms of their qualifications and in terms of their experience. And I'm not quite comfortable with the names that are being forwarded into nomination in comparison to some of the other applications in terms of the experience and the qualifications. So at this point, I don't know that I would be able to support the nominations as they're brought forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have the same thoughts. You know, Mr. Krent came up and explained exactly how important this committee is, as did Mayor Stein. And I think, again, when you look through the resumes, you look over all the experience, I think it's very clear that the three that are up right now are really not the ones that we really need for the future. And I think the, again, I would not be able to support those three. I would be more to support the people who are already in those positions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Fleming?
As you might suspect, I'm always looking for compromise. I think we have great people on the Planning Commission now. And I can't support, while I would be willing to compromise, I can't support all three of your nominations there. Maybe that'll open up the discussion as to what we can do. I know these are your appointments. If you're not willing to change, then I couldn't, I can't vote for all three of those, but I would be willing to discuss some compromise, if you're so inclined to do that, as to what I could support. But I want to hear from the others as well.
I would be interested to hear your, the gentleman that you could support.
Okay. And Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
I have similar concerns. You know, I like some of the names. I am not familiar with other names. I like continuity, which I think is one of the things that I've seen in a lot of the emails and calls that I've had. I also think a fresh perspective is often required. So to that end, I could probably support one or two of the names, but not all three.
Okay. Attorney Blum, how do we handle, can we break them apart?
I'm going to defer to our city clerk, who is our parliamentary.
Mayor, they're your nominations, so you can choose to take under advisement the recommendations of council, but you, it is your, they are your nominations to make.
So I can nominate each one individually and let them be voted on individually?
If you'd like to do that, you could.
Well, I would like to do that, because I would like to move forward and get at least some of my nominations, and I appreciate your call for compromise. I do. I would like first then to nominate Gordon Shepke. If we can have a, should we have discussion, or do we just have a vote at this point?
There's, the motion on the table right now is for all three of them. So you could amend your own motion to just be for one nominee, and then have a vote on that, and then continue on from there.
I'll amend the resolution and nominate Gordon Shepke for the Planning Commission. Second?
I'll second.
Second, moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Henderson. Discussion? Councilman Slater?
I'm going to base my vote on qualifications also. And I think Mayor Stein did an excellent job of reading the qualifications of the three current Planning Commission. I think it's bad leadership to replace one-third of a committee. I think that's a terrible decision to make. So certainly, I couldn't, I could never support replacing one-third of a committee. But more importantly, I think this is the most important committee that we have. I don't want to diminish the responsibilities from other committees, but this is the most important in my mind. So I'm not looking at the negative either for Mr. Shepke. I'm looking at his qualifications versus the three that are on the board, and to me, it's a no-brainer that any one of the three would be more qualified than Mr. Shepke, so I could not support that.
Okay. Councilman Slade?
Just to clarify things, Councilman Slater, we're not talking one-third of the committee if we replace one. There are nine people on the committee. There are three that are up now, but actually, there are nine active serving. So if we changed one of those, it would be one-ninth.
Just to clarify, I said if we replace three.
Yes.
That would be one-third, and I would never be in favor of that.
Got you.
But individually, qualification-wise, Mr. Shepke does not meet the qualifications of the three that are on the board at the time, so I could not support that.
Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
This is per the amendment for Mr. Shepke. Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll amend the resolution to...
You wouldn't need to amend it again. You could just bring another resolution for...
Okay. So I then make resolution to nominate Ed Kempin to the Planning Commission, to serve on the Planning Commission Board for a term expiring December 31, 2014, to be approved at the next city council meeting scheduled for February 20, 2012. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Henderson. Discussion? Councilman, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mayor, I was willing to, and I am willing to go, and already have made my choice for... and already have made my choice for Mr. Shepkey. I could have also supported Mr. Kempin, had you recommended him for that position as one. But when I look at the two remaining people on the Planning Commission, with all their experience, there are three that were up for reappointment. The other two, I'm leaning very much in favor for Robert Schultz and Tom Stratt to remain on the Planning Commission and have one appointment there, which is now Gordon Shepkey, bring one new person on the Planning Commission, but to keep the continuity with existing two. So Mr. Kempin, I see he's in the audience there. I supported you for city council. I would have supported you had your name come forward as one member of the Planning Commission, but Mr. Shepkey came forward first, I would have supported him. I'm not willing to make two changes at this point to the Planning Commission. There'd be other appointments in the future. But for now, I'm holding that I'd like to keep Tom Stratt and Bob Schultz in those positions. Mr. Oldman also did a nice job, but he doesn't have quite the experience that the other two have. And so that's why, if I had to make a choice to substitute one, it was Mr. Shepkey or Mr. Kempin. For Mr. Oldman, in this case, it's, the decision's been made for me, Mr. Shepkey. So I'll be voting against Mr. Kempin, simply because I think that we need to keep the continuity there with the experience with Tom Stratt and Bob Schultz existing on the committee.
Any other discussion? Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to point out in specificity in reviewing this application. First, I noted that originally it was the third choice. And in addition, I think that there's a lack of experience here that I noticed in terms of architectural, building experience. Or another key component that I think I missed in my first statement was economic development experience, which I think is very important to this committee as well. And I didn't see any of that on this application, so I will be voting no.
Any other comments? Mr. Kempin has a lifetime of experience in analyzing data, and I think that that's an important component of the Planning Commission. He has a servant's heart, and he has core principles that I really respect. That's why I nominated him, and that's why I believe he would make a wonderful addition. He's a man of integrity, he's a man of inner strength, and he has just a great servant's heart. So I'm disappointed if his nomination isn't approved this evening, at least to give two weeks, so that we can examine in detail and discuss the concerns that we might have with his nomination. At least give him an opportunity to come to you and work for that nomination, or that appointment, excuse me. Can we have a vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion fails. At this point, can I postpone my nominations until the following meeting, rather than go through the exercise again? Because Councilman Fleming has indicated that he's interested in the two other appointments, and I need some time to determine what I want to do at this point. Can I postpone the other two appointments, or nominations, till next meeting?
What would be proper is if you severed the vote at this point, so that you could sever and postpone the remaining two nominations, since they're already on the agenda for this evening? You could, and one has been accepted, you could sever the vote and postpone the two. So you would need two votes, one to sever, one to postpone the two.
Okay. So can I have a vote? Do I ask for discussion first on this?
You need to move in second, and then discuss, and then move.
All right, I'll move to sever the vote, if I have a second. Support. Moved by Mayor Daniels, supported by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion?
I'm not sure why we're delaying for two weeks. It seems fairly clear at this point that Mr. Schultz and Mr. Stratt have a majority of folks at the table that would be willing to support them. I, unless you have someone, a third option, that we may not know about at this time. I guess I'm wondering a little bit more explanation.
I would like to have an opportunity to explore other options that I might have, not to say anything in any way against the gentleman that Councilman Fleming is talking about, but I'd like to have an opportunity to explore my options.
Okay.
Councilman Slater?
Well, I agree with Councilman Teetz. We have the information we need tonight. I don't see any reason why we should sever this. Let's move forward and get the nominations for next week, so we don't have to delay this two more weeks after that. I think it's been pretty clear that there's majority support here, and we should move forward. So I'm not in favor of severing.
Okay. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner? I'm sorry.
Yep. As I mentioned, continuity is kind of an issue with me as well. So, you know, I think we've gotten a fresh set of eyes involved. And I would be in favor of at least two of the remainders as well. So I would vote no on severing this.
So we'll follow through with a vote? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Motion fails. So we will, at this point?
You would need to make your third nomination.
Nominate Mr. Schultz and Mr. Stratt? Is that, obviously, that's what the council wants me to do. And?
Do one at a time.
So one at a time at this point, okay?
You could, you could do both at the same time, if you'd like, since you severed for the two.
Well, all right.
Or you could separate, it's up to you.
Well, I'd let it be resolved that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby forwards Mr. Schultz and Mr. Stratt to serve on the Planning Commission Board, to be reappointed to the Planning Commission Board for a term expiring December 31, 2014, to be approved at the next city council meeting scheduled for February 20.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, supported by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? No discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll move to regular business. We have board and committee appointments that were nominated at the council meeting on January 23, 2012, to be moved forward by Mayor Protem McGinnis. We begin with the Historic District Study Commission. Mayor Protem, would you like to move forward the resolution?
Mayor. Pardon me? Sorry. In order for the Election Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals to have members to vote on, we would need to do a roll-call vote for nominees for those two boards.
I thought the Historic District was first.
It's first, but those nominations were successful at the last meeting. So for this, these two boards, we would have the first, the roll-call vote for the Election Commission, then the roll-call vote for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Two, two changes. Mr. Eisenbacher, pardon me, I'll start at the top. For the Election Commission, I spoke with Mr. Harrell. He is not entrusted, and had conversation. Then, under the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Eisenbacher is not entrusted either. So just wanted to pass on that information.
Then, then the, if the Mayor Protem wishes, she could insert those names into the nomination, because it's essentially down to exact number of people that you need.
So we don't need a tally?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. And then we move to the Historic District Study Committee?
Yes. Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem? McGinnis?
Does it make a difference if I do these individually?
You can do them all at once, if you'd like.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. The Historic District Study Committee, ad hoc, three terms. The first will go to Lorraine Campbell, the second to Barbara Chambers, and the third to Bruce Bloomingdale. For the Election Commission, for a term expiring January 31, 2013, the Republican will be David D. Anderson. And for a term expiring January 31, 2013, the Democrat will be Timothy Dewan. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, two terms, expiring January 31, 2015. The first will be Bruce Bloomingdale, and the second will be Orestes Keltounis. And I need a second.
You need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. And then moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes, appointments made. We move on to other nominations for various boards and committees as follows. The first, the first nomination is moved by Mayor Troy. I hereby forward the following person, Mr. Frank Stow, to be voted upon at the next city council meeting scheduled for February 23, 2012, for the appointment, for the reappointment to the Board of Review. Can we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?